I don't have a light.
There it is.
There it is. All right. Welcome to the November 14th Devils Lake Water Improvement District Board Meeting. I am Tina French. We have Bill Sexton in attendance, Steve Brown in attendance, and Kent Norris in attendance. Kathy Kramer is excused. So approval of consent agenda. And I apologize, I did not print a packet. Hopefully, everybody printed their own.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I noticed that in the, in our financial statements, we've got some numbers in red that are changes. Can I ask if, do you know what those are for?
Yeah, actually, they're not changes necessarily. They're, they're numbers that didn't match up to the budget.
Oh.
And so, in our transition of our accountant change, we wanted to outline that in red so that the new accountant or bookkeeper could reconcile it.
Is it just that the numbers didn't add up column-wise in our budget?
It has to end up doing with the tax payment that came in. So, those are lagged over 30 days, and you'll collect revenue throughout the year. Biggest portion of our revenue comes right after property taxes, but due to collection of delinquent tax, there could be some other revenue that comes in.
And from, from what I can see, all of these are positive numbers, so they-
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, it's more revenue.
Don't let the red fool ya.
Yeah. The red was for outline purposes, but it's extra revenue.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, public comments? Do we have anybody? So I probably didn't even have a sign-out sheet, sorry. We're flying blind here tonight, guys. All right, committee reports. Sewer Committee, I can report that we have no final report yet. I think Brian gave a presentation last month that it's gonna be-
December.
End of December before he gets that to us, so I would anticipate voting on dissolving the sewer committee in January. Special projects and events? Nothing to report? Okay. Save Our Shoreline and Water Monitoring? Nothing in a report? Okay, wow. Let's see, District Projects and Operations, normally, this is Josh's section, but I read through this, and I did not see anything new to be reported necessarily, most of it. So, just running through quickly for, I guess, for the record, the Devils Lake Aeration Project. As you recall, last month, John Tucci was here. There was several of the diffusers were maintenance. We replaced a hose that feeds the compressor manifold, and it has been working as expected. And I don't have anything more on that. Bill, do you have anything to add on that?
Yes, we did clean out the aeration diffusers, and just like the agenda or the report states that they were heavily covered with algae, and after we got done cleaning those, they were, as far as John communicated, that they were a lot different in operation as far as bubble plume. So we noticed a significant difference in the amount of bubbles that were coming out versus prior to being cleaned.
I noticed the other day, maybe 10 days, two weeks ago, I paddleboarded over to one, and it seemed like it was way more bubbly.
Yeah, they were constricted heavily, heavily. So, yeah, that was, that was a good call, and he's also recommended that they be done twice a year rather than once a year just because of the biomass that was on them. We'll be looking at doing that probably again in June. And also, the aeration unit that was at Kathy Kramer's developed a problem in the power switch, so that's under investigation by one of the electrician that we notified is supposed to come over and check out the switch so it can get back in operation. So currently, it's not functioning at Kathy's, and Josh wanted to have it moved back to Noel Walker's prior to next month, and hopefully, within those guidelines, we can have it moved back within a couple of weeks as soon as we find out what the problem is with the, with the motor and power supply.
So is it the power supply on the aerator or at the, at the power?
It's at the receptacle, and we had a tester, and it was, we don't know about the unit yet until we get power to the receptacle unit from the power source.
Okay.
As soon as we find out what the issue is, we'll have, I'll let Josh know that it's ready to move.
And then, do we have a set date to take that out of the water to protect it from the storms? Or just as, as we know, a storm-
Well, it's kind of related to what the position is and where it's located. Naturally, it won't be near Vivian's, but typically, it was at Noel Walker's when we first installed it, which is fairly protected, and it was operating in a boat slip itself, so it should be fairly safe as far as winter storms and wind access and whatnot.
Okay, cool. Thanks for that date. Devils Lake Video Monitoring Project. The, Jim Dewey did some new module thingies, and so we're not having the interruption in the Wi-Fi. So supposedly, that's fixed. Airstream Pro, we just talked about. Devils Lake Flood Protection, so this is the dredging of the river. We are still waiting on final proposals for the total cost of that. Still waiting on an approval from, I think, ODFW. And there's three suggestions on here: high-pressure pump to cut a channel, suction dredging, and track-o removal, which we discussed last month. And, so yeah, we're still waiting on the Army Corps and DSL permit to be finished or preliminarily approved before we submit the, the full permit. And hopefully, everybody noticed that all the logs were removed, and so Jeremy Page did that. I think he did an excellent job. I went down and looked at it from the Vivian side, and we hauled, our company hauled off four 40-yarders worth of logs, and I know Jeremy hauled off several logs that he thought could be salvaged for firewood or some other sort of thing. So, we took a lot of logs out there. I know, I spoke with Tom briefly, and he said that our, the original bit of 3,900 was exceeded by a little bit, and I don't know if that's because of the number of logs we removed or just staff or time or whatever, but it was not significant, but I thought it looked great. And I'm excited to see, supposedly, we have heavy rains coming. I got a flood warning today from the Emergency Management Services, so I'm excited to see what heavy rains do to that sand island if we get some water flowing through there. I did notice that the First Street Canal is flowing nicely, which it was not the last time I was down there. So it was flowing really nicely yesterday. Miles?
They cleaned, cleaned out at the same time all of the canal behind the, that flows into-
So that's what I'm calling the First Street Canal. I don't know if that's technically the right term. But no, that canal was not cleaned out, just the river logs. I believe that, the canal is city property, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yes.
So, oh, do you have, were you gonna say something?
They were proposing to have that cleaned out, I believe it was last year as well, but it didn't happen.
Right.
One of the things I, I was over there, maybe this afternoon or sometime, and looking at the debris that's on the west side of the bridge, because we've got King Tides coming on the 25th through the 27th, the first King Tides of the year, and I think we have them scheduled for November, January, December, maybe in January. So there's three King Tide events taking place this winter, and I was looking to see, be interesting to see if there are any of those logs that are over there under kilos, make it up into the river again, up on our side again, so.
Hopefully, they stay on the west side because the city has a permit to-
Right, I hope so, too.
Take care of them. And hopefully, yeah. I'm sorry, Water Quality Briefing. In a nutshell, the dissolved oxygen on the bottom of the lake is excellent, and has, in this, it says over 97% of the bottom is above 90% dissolved oxygen. pH is averaged 7.4, currently excellent, indicating a healthy water chemistry. During a visual survey, there was noticeable concentration of wind-driven algae, mostly, most likely ana-
Anabina.
Bina, thank you. And that was mostly concentrated in the southwest end of the lake, kind of by Regatta Grange, is my understanding. Josh went to the, I believe it's called the Oregon Links Association Conference in Bend, and he said it was really productive. He talked to a mapping service, which we're going to be discussing shortly, that was highly recommended to help us start doing a mapping of the bottom of the lake. And he, the reason he's not here tonight, by the way, I didn't mention Josh isn't here, but he is at the NOMS Conference in Vermont. So he, I've talked to him intermittently, and he said it is like drinking from a firehouse. So lots of great information that he's gathering there, so. District continues to work on identifying sources of pollution in Thompson Creek. DQ is working towards identifying the sources of contamination as staff time allows. I'm not gonna, I have no comment on that. New business. So, we have, Josh sent from the company that, oh gosh.
Aqua-
Aqua Technics?
Yes.
So, this is a draft contract to map the bottom of the lake, and this has to do with vegetation. So, I'm sure everybody has seen new vegetation growing. Steve and I exchanged pictures today. I stopped last week, maybe 10 days ago, out in front of the Doolings' house. There is a large patch of something growing, and it literally was not there a couple of weeks ago, and it is there now. So I stopped and took big pictures of it, and then really up close pictures of it, sent it to Josh. Steve has something that looks like it's from the ocean to me, but-
Moss, yeah.
It's a alien-looking moss growing at his house, and then, you know, we've had various other people reporting it. So the moral of the story is, is we want to get a survey done of the entire lake and the bottom of the lake, and then start looking at what it's going to take to get the equilibrium that we need for vegetation versus getting on top of it before we're behind the eight ball and knowing what those costs are. So the first step is this draft contract. I think everybody either has it or has read it.
Yeah, if I could say a word, Tina?
Yes.
So, this came about from last meeting. I talked with Josh and asked him if there were professionals, because we attempted to survey the lake and come up with a figure of where the vegetation is and what percentage is out there. And I had asked Josh, are there professionals that do this? And he said, certainly. And so what we did was, we asked him to get ahold of a company and get the information to the board, which he did, along with a sampling of one of their reports that they've done in the northwest. And so in a nutshell, what this company does is they map the entire lake. And so you'll get depth measurements, which, as everybody knows, we haven't seen a new depth measurement in the lake. We were trying to decide how long ago it was. I thought it was from 95 or something.
I think it was 95.
So, we don't even know if there's been any sediment growth down there or how much, and if our depths have changed. So, this company does that, but they actually go down there with cameras also and identify throughout the lake, from the lake bottom, what's growing there. And it will give us a beginning point of how fast and where the vegetation is starting from a professional standpoint. It will also help us identify what is growing at the bottom of the lake. There are specialists in helping identify the type of plants. So, I think it's gonna be a great starting point for us because we know there's vegetation growing. And from my observation, it's growing quickly. At a time, I wouldn't think that it would be growing so quickly, being the fall and the lakes cooled down, you know, all of those reasons, but I'm seeing very quick growth around my property. So, Tina, what my intent is, is to not have to bring this back to the next board meeting for approval. So we do need some clarification. We have a sample of what their contract is, and they gave us a pretty good estimate of what it would cost, which is $6,500 for us to map the bottom of the lake. We do have it in our budget to be able to obtain this report. And what I was hoping is, is that we could get Josh approval tonight to spend up to that, but to get us a clear scope of work. I just don't want to have to wait 30 days because this company is booked out, and we want to get on their schedule, too.
So the goal is, is to get on the schedule this spring, right?
No, the goal is to-
Oh, this winter?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we don't want to wait till spring. The sooner, I think, we get cameras in the bottom. Especially, we don't know if the clarity of the lake is gonna turn at any time, and right now, the clarity still is very, very good in the lake.
Yeah.
Discussion.
I, and I agree with that. I, I want to get on this. But do you guys know what you're looking at here in this sample?
Well, I have it on my-
Sorry.
Well, I have a hard copy here, and I guess my question is, I tried to read through this, and I'm not sure exactly what, what we're getting in return. And so that's what Steve's asking, I think, is to get a contract and clarification of exactly what we're gonna get, receive for our, our contract with this company if we choose to go forward with it, or if Josh decides that this is the right company to go forward. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'm assuming, I mean, I'm assuming, there are some definitions here.
So in the glossary-
I've looked through it several times, and it's hard for me to understand completely.
I guess, one of the things when I, that automatically caught my eye was when I saw this map, and I saw the red edges, that, you know, I was wondering, is this a temperature map? Is, you know, so maybe Josh knows what these maps represent, what we're looking at, because I can't see anywhere that identifies all the different maps and what they mean.
Right, I've, I've got the whole packet right in front of me, and I even have a glossary of terms and grid and everything, and it's, I'm sure that they provide the information that we'll need.
Okay.
But I don't understand it.
Okay.
At least with the, the information we have.
Okay.
So the public kind of knows, too. So, the information that the board is looking at is parts of a report from a lake in Washington, Kitsap Lake. So, this company can't release the entire report to us without the permission of whoever ordered this. And we just wanted to get a sampling of what some of the report could report, not an entire report. And we got a sampling of a contract, but it didn't have enough language for the board. Because of time is of the essence, that's why I'm trying to figure out a path that the board can approve up to a dollar amount based on Josh getting a complete satisfactory report.
So, do you have specifics of what you're looking for in this draft contract that you want Josh to receive before he signs a contract?
What I would suggest that we do would get Josh to partner with one of the board members for a final approval.
Are you volunteering to be that person?
I would be happy to do it.
Okay.
Well, I think the main things we want are, and I know Josh and Tom went out and did the best they could with what our current equipment is, and had an estimate of 0.3% of the lake that's covered with plant growth, and we're not sure that that's accurate. And so we wanted a professional company to determine what our percentage of-
Right.
-of weed growth is, and-
No, I, and I agree with all that. I guess my question is, is looking at this draft contract under number four of scope of work is provide agreed deliverables, but nowhere is that defined. So what are the deliverables? And maybe, maybe it's, you know, whatever, the little pieces of the packet that we have for Kitsap Lake, maybe this is a bigger thing, and that's the deliverable? I guess I just want to make sure that we're, for $6,500, we're not gonna get some nice colored maps that we, you know, on the shelf.
Yeah, I think, I think between Steve and Josh that they can-
Okay. I'm fine with that. Have you guys, I mean, I, I trust you guys to come up with what the deliverables are and to make sure that that's what we're looking for. Because, I mean, we're all in agreement that what we're looking for is what is the percentage that we currently have of vegetation growth, and at what depths?
Right.
Right? That's what we're looking for.
Yes.
So that's the deliverable, and so as long as that is in here.
Right.
And then, I, I mean, I think that, you know, with all the reports that we've had done over the years, some of them are 30 years old or 25 years old, and technology has increased so much with, you know, temp- temperature, because that's what I was kind of excited to see here of the one I thought that was a temperature thing, because sometimes that can identify, you know, if we have, not to bring up a bad subject, but failing septic systems, you know, a temperature thing can be really helpful there. So anyhow, I, do you want to make a motion for your recommendation?
For my, for my ask?
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that the board approve up to $7,000, Josh to approve a contract with, what was the name of the company?
Aqua Technics.
Aqua Technic.
And you'll work with him on the deliverables of the contract?
In conjunction with me, with the deliverables.
Okay.
Outline.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve up to $7,000 to come up with a contract to work with Steve on the deliverables to Aqua Technics, and Josh can approve that contract once delivered. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. That's exciting.
And we'll keep the board advised on our progress.
Other new business. I do not have anything, I, there's a note here that the financial review is underway, but that is not completed yet?
We, we're just waiting on them. There, we gave them everything that they needed, so I'm sure by the next board meeting, we'll have it.
Okay, and I've met the new bookkeeper.
Yes, I-
And that transition's going well?
That transition is going well. I met with him today at the college at 10.
Okay.
And he will mostly be working out of the college, out of our other office there.
Yeah, that's great.
And I paid him his first paycheck today, and what I liked is that he tracked all of his time used and what it was used on.
Good.
So measurable performance that I can actually check and see that the work's done. I feel good about that. Cameron, I asked him to be prepared at the December meeting to come and introduce himself also.
Great.
And so you'll get a chance to meet him in December.
And if you haven't already, make sure that you like our new Facebook page. So, we have a new part-time employee that got a brand-new page up, and if you have pictures to provide, make sure and send those in. But this is kind of a slower time on the lake, but we've had some amazing sunrises and sunsets and all sorts of fun stuff, so. All right, that is all I show on the agenda. Does anybody have any non-agenda items? Would anybody like to speak on agenda or non-agenda items? Miles?
I have been contacted by Judy Wettel.
Can you come up to the microphone, Miles? I'm sorry. I know that's, I'd bring it to you if I could.
I'm Miles Schlesinger, resident of Devils Lake. I was contacted by email by Judy Wettel, a homeowner on Lake Street south of the Regatta Park, and she wanted some help from me because she would like to buy the Marina and operate it as such. She has partners, but she doesn't know where to go. I mentioned it to the mayor, who is active on our sewer committee, and he had recommended that she contact me. I don't have the slightest idea on what it's worth or how to approach it, but I will meet with her and encourage her because I want gasoline available on the lake, because we've got a fishing derby, and I believe that the lake will not attract any outside boaters if there isn't a Marina available. And there are plenty of things that a Marina could rent, and I think that Devils Lake Water Improvement District should take an interest in getting a, an operator there, whether it be the city or a private individual. So, I wanted to keep you apprised, she will not be back from Chicago where she is working right now. They're doing a project for something, and I don't know what consulting business she has, but she's gone about 50% of the- she has, but she's gone about fifty percent of the time. That's all I know. But I will keep you apprised of any developments that she or the city or something can do.
Okey-dokey.
Thanks, Miles.
Thanks, Miles.
Thanks, Miles.
I forgot, Josh did put in here an update under special projects, events and communications. The fishing derby, the Lincoln County Economic Development Grant has been submitted. Staff is currently preparing grants to be submitted to the Sletz Tribal Charitable Contribution Fund and the Oregon Coast Visitors Association for financial assistance with the event. The city, Lincoln City, Devil's Lake Neighborhood Association, Oregon Parks and Rec and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife had all agreed to participate and the event is currently scheduled for May 2nd, 2020. Sorry about that.
Thanks, Miles.
I skipped that update. All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we're adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.